Welcome and thank you for joining in for the second part of this evening's League of Women Voters of Napa County Candidate Forum. I am Yolanda Chambrun of the League of Women Voters of Napa County. This portion of tonight's program is to present the candidates for Napa City Council District 4. If you wish to listen to the Spanish translation, click the globe-like icon on the bottom right of your screen and check Spanish. Our translator for tonight is Gabriela Vargas. We have recorded this on YouTube, our LWB website, Facebook, and on our other social media platforms in about seven to ten days. Per FCC rules, no other recording of this forum or excerpts from an LWB recording are allowed. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We are nonpartisan and do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League does participate in issue advocacy and voter education. If you would like to join us in our work, please visit our website, lwnapa.org, for membership information and much, much more. The League encourages civil discourse and the candidates have all agreed to participate under guidelines set for this forum. The questions for this forum were solicited in advance from the community and from our LWB members over email. We had a LWB team screen the questions to avoid duplication and anything inappropriate. The candidates have not seen the questions in advance. The number of questions we ask depends on the time available. Our LWB team helping with this second forum of the night are our timekeeper, Sue Kessler. Our co-hosts and moderators are Vida Flores, co-host and local league president, and Bernie Brooks, moderator for this District 4 portion of the evening. Please note that our moderators are here on behalf of the LWB and not in any way to express their own personal opinions or that of other groups to which they might belong. Now to turn over the evening over to Bernie.
Thank you, Yolanda, and thank you, candidates and attendees for being here. Before we start the Q and A session, let's go over a few ground rules. The order for answering the questions tonight will be in alphabetical order, so we will start with Renee and then move to Bernie. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond to each question, and then we will rotate with each question back and forth. Candidates, please keep your eye on the timekeeper screen and make sure that you can see when things change to yellow. That means you have just thirty seconds remaining, and when red for when time is up. And I may have to cut you off, but hopefully you'll be able to see that and follow it. Once we go through as much time as we have for questions, at the end, each candidate will have one and a half minutes for a closing statement in the reverse order, meaning Bernie will start first and then Renee. Okay, now let's begin with the first question. The first question, which will start with Renee, what experience has prepared you for this position?
I have been a resident of Napa since 1997. I live in my district, District 4, since 2000, so about twenty years. Are twenty years in this beautiful district. I understand it well and understand our needs. I, as a business owner in downtown Napa for fifteen years, I am currently in Cal Stoga, so I have twenty-three years in the restaurant business. But the first fifteen years I had in downtown Napa, and I have a very strong understanding of local and tourist needs. I worked on the, I volunteered on the Napa Downtown Association and understood a lot of different concerns that were going on during a turning point in Napa in 2010, 2011. And I just feel like I have a good grip of what happened before in 1997 and where we're going in the future. And I think I can contribute my experience and my skills in a different perspective.
Thank you. Okay, we will reset. And now Bernie, same question to you.
Thank you so much. So currently I am a business owner in Napa. I've been a business owner since 2007 where I started a small business with my father. We're serving many clients in the city of Napa. I've been part of the Napa County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce for several years. That's given me a perspective about our small business community, especially during the hard times like COVID-19 crisis, when we go through other crises. I served in the Marine Corps for six years in various leadership roles that loved me and taught me how to overcome, you know, tough situations and helped me develop leadership skills. Also, you know, my call to action was in 2015 when I applied for the vacancy to City Council, and I realized that I had a lot to learn. So since then, I've been working to be prepared for this situation. I attended Citizens Academy to learn the basics of government and budget, and now I'm the vice chair of the Napa General Plan, crafting our vision for the next twenty years. And aside from that, I've served several other boards. I've been in leadership in Napa Valley. That's also helped me develop other leadership traits that I will apply as your next city council member.
Thank you. And now for the next question, we will start with you, Bernie. What are your top priorities for your district if you are elected?
So right now it's economic recovery. We have to safely bring our workforce back. We have to support our small business community and make sure that we can recover some of the revenue. It's nice to see that downtown is becoming busy, but there's still concern about COVID-19 being spread. So we have to do that in a safe way. We can continue to do some of the work that they've done, but we can do more. We can close some more streets. We can continue to advocate our workforce to empower them to follow guidelines and making sure that customers are following guidelines. I think education and advocacy through that, and I've done that through the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. The other one is housing. Over fifty percent of our renters are rent burdened. That means they're paying more than thirty percent for rent to live in Napa. According to housing report, just under ten percent of our market is actually affordable. So we have to do better. We have to do more for struggling families. I believe that if you work in Napa, you should have a better opportunity to live in Napa.
Great. Thank you. And Renee?
Could you please repeat the question?
Certainly, and we'll reset the timer as well. What are your top priorities for your district if elected?
Okay, so for my district, District 4, we have special, different needs than Napa as a whole. District 4 is slowly becoming less and less residential with commercialization moving into our residential areas, and we're losing the integrity of our neighborhoods. One thing I would do as city councilperson is slow that down. Slow down zoning of commercial areas, for instance, canvassing on, for instance, parts of Third Street are almost no residential homes, many, many, many commercial homes. And this is really, really important to my district. Another issue in my district is we would like to, you know, have more essential businesses and a more diversified economy. District 4 has become more and more of a tourist, you know, kind of stopping ground for Napa Valley. And I think we would like to have more doctors' offices, dentists, businesses besides tourist-oriented businesses. For instance, we're losing Kohl's, and this is a big problem for us. We already lost McCollis, and so we really would like to keep, you know, one place at least, you know. We would like to have a grocery store downtown, so we're kind of a wasteland in a way.
Thank you. Okay, and now Renee will start with you for the third question. This question is, what actions should the Napa City Council take to mitigate the impact of climate change? Would you support a climate element as part of the Napa General Plan and a climate action plan?
Oh, absolutely. I think going into the next twenty years for our general plan, we need to evaluate every single development as far as how the world is so quickly changing. Climate change is happening before our eyes. So yes, that's a very important thing for me, and I would come at that.
Great, thank you. And Bernie, same question.
Yeah, it's a very important question. Thank you so much. So in my role with the general plan, I've advocated to have two elements, a climate change element and environmental justice element that will allow us to provide the framework to do the work that we need to do to combat climate change. One of the things is we need more trees. We don't have a tree can't be baseline. So we need to have more data to know where we are as far as trees. We are a tree city, but we're not quite there yet where we can do more. So when I walk different neighborhoods, I realize some neighborhoods have very little shade, have very little trees, and there's an opportunity. The city of Napa failed to apply for a grant that would allow us funding to plant more trees. This happened, this expired in June, so we need to have a proactive approach and the money that's available from the state. Also, we need to understand the census tracts in city of Napa. Some areas have more toxic, more pollution than others. If you look at, if you look at southeast Napa, it's in the ninetieth percentile when it comes to toxic environment, the whole city, the whole state of California. So we need to understand elements a little bit better, create a framework and policies that will actually create change and not just talk about it, but actually have policies that will put us in a better place for the future generations.
Great, thank you. And we reset, and we will start the next question with you, Bernie. Napa will have to redistrict again, most likely after the 2020 census. And will you support having the new districts drawn by an independent citizens' commission?
I would. I think it's important to have public input, to have the community be involved in this because after everything said and done, we're here to represent our community, to listen to the members of our community. So having a diverse commission that really reflects the makeup of our community to make sure that it's fair, that it's equal representation, and that the marginalized communities really have a voice in this. So we have a great opportunity ahead of time to get this done right, to make sure that not only the district are drawn correctly, but we take care of some of the islands within the RUL, within the rural urban limit in the city of Napa that right now don't have a voice within the city of Napa. They have to go to a county. So we can tackle a lot of issues during the redistricting. So it's important to both have our leadership elected and the community involved in this whole process to make sure one is transparent, it's the right outcome, and we're happy about it.
Great, thank you. And same question to you, Renee.
Repeat the question, please.
Certainly. Napa will have to redistrict council seats following the 2020 census results. Will you support having the districts drawn by an independent citizens' commission?
I actually think I would say no to this. I would like the city council to be a part of redistricting with workshops and community outreach the very same way that we had it last time. The city council led it for us. And we had plenty of public, well, we would have had except for COVID hit. But during normal times, we should be able to do it just fine through city council meetings that are just kind of more fluid and open instead of it being such a kind of strict way where, you know, I would like it to be through City Hall, through the city council. People could go to meetings, be involved, see what's going on, watch it on, you know, on Zoom if possible, or not on Zoom, but online. Hopefully, we won't be doing Zoom forever, or maybe we will. It's not such a bad thing after all. But yeah, so I would say stick with the way it was before. I think it's a great way to do it with, as long as we have, you know, plenty of public outreach and then touching back base with City Hall and then back into public outreach. You know, or perhaps, you know, a little bit of both with that and then an independent person overseeing it to make sure the process is fair and democratic.
Great, thank you. And now for the next question, Renee, we will start with you. With the impact of COVID-19 and fires on Napa City's revenues, what are your ideas for how to improve the local economy? And what priorities do you have for the coming year with our limited budget?
Okay, so the city council has already had to grapple with most of this already, and I know they've mitigated spending as far as public works has pulled in a lot. We're not paving streets at the same pace we were before. We would probably have to continue pulling in our expenditures while at the same time finding ways to continue to bring more money in. We have had some luck with the CARES Act package, but you know, that only goes so far. So for now, we just need to stay safe. Everybody needs to do their part so that we can get businesses opened as soon as possible. We all need to stay on board with that. I think we have too much arguing going on about what we should do or not do. Let's all get on the same page and make it happen as sooner than later.
Great, thank you. And Bernie, the same question. Yeah, here we go.
So I didn't mention a little bit earlier about creating a safe place for our workers to make sure that our businesses are safe, our workforce comes back to work in a safe way. But also the budget, you know, it's, we have dipped into reserves, and the city's policy is not to have our reserves so low within two years. So when we talk about, we have to replenish our reserves because we all know when the next crisis is going to happen. So it's very important to understand the businesses that are already open and empower them to stay open. I've been to downtown. People have actually adjusted to a new lifestyle of COVID-19 with the outdoor seating. Think we can increase that. We can close some streets to create more space because space will keep us safe, and we can add more tables for downtown restaurants and make sure that we have education downtown to keep people safe. So we don't get complacent and have a spike in COVID-19. So and with diversifying our economy, if we try and bring in new industries, the first thing they're going to say is can we house our employees? So it comes back to housing. We need to, we need to address housing for our workforce if we want to diversify our economy.
Great, thank you. And for the next question, we'll start with you, Bernie. How would you follow up with the city's declaration that systemic racism is a public health crisis? Would you support creating a human rights commission to advise the city manager and city council? And would you support creating a citizens' review panel to oversee Napa police?
Yes to both of those. I would definitely support that. You know, I made a post about this because it took me a couple of days to kind of process my feelings about this declaration because I have mixed feelings. It took this long to have a policy like this in place. You know, the Lenox community, my family, we've been having this discussion for many years, and Lenox community for many generations. So I'm happy that this passed, but you know, it took a long time, and we have to make sure that we live up to this promise. It's not just a resolution, it's a promise. So having these two commissions well represented and reflective of our community will put forth policies that will allow us to live up to that promise. And also, one thing we haven't discussed is land use. Land use has been a tool for systemic racism for many years since the beginning of our country. And you know, I've attended many planning commission and many city council meetings, and we have to start looking at land use through that kind of lens to make sure that we're creating equity through our marginalized community. And the second part is creating a language equity policy to make sure that when we communicate to our community it's in languages that reflect our community because during crisis, we don't communicate very well to other languages. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee, same question to you.
Sorry, please repeat.
Yeah, I know, that was a long one. How would you follow up with the city's declaration that systemic racism is a public health crisis? Would you support creating a human rights commission to advise the city manager and city council? And would you support creating a citizens' review panel to oversee Napa police?
Okay, so yes on both. I am very happy with what just happened in City Hall. And however, what is the word systemic racism? And do all of our city council members completely understand it? And that's one reason why it would be a good idea to have a commission that can actually explain and educate and maybe classes as well inside City Hall for our City Hall council members and our mayor, people who are very knowledgeable in explaining what systemic racism is, which is different than just, you know, what is the difference between racism and systemic racism? We're all kind of victims of, you know, our society is a victim of systemic racism by default in that the power is held by one racial group more than the other. And through years of racism, there's inequality within our system and ways we view people of color. And so having these, you know, policies is one thing, but I don't want it to be lip service. You know, it's very important that we're just not going through the motions. We really need to embrace what it means to evaluate each situation through systemic racism and how it affects our people and our, in our community as well as the police department to really evaluate what it means to racially profile, which is something that has happened to me, okay? So I have a history with it, and it has happened to me.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, and now Renee, the next question. Do you support having all three open land tracts, Napa Oaks, Disletta, and Timber Hill remain as greenbelt areas and work to find other areas within the city limits to provide the necessary affordable and workforce housing for our city?
Yes, I absolutely do believe that we need to concentrate our housing inside our livable, workable areas within Napa that already exist within our Napa downtown area, our corridors, Jefferson corridor. We need to focus on not creating urban sprawl. We need to protect our environment, our watersheds, and the integrity and beauty of our landscape, which is one reason why tourists come here. One very big reason why tourists come here. We want to continue to have tourists visit our beautiful landscape, not just our housing tracts. So for very, for different reasons, but moreover, environmental, you know, tourist, geotourism, in other words, geographical tourism, in other words, we need to one hundred percent greenbelt these areas. Also, the neighbors aren't happy with what's going on on Foster Road, and we need to listen. This isn't my district. This is District 2, by the way. But if I don't listen to District 2, why would I listen to District 4? So I am running for District 4, but also I will be voting on these issues, and I will make sure that we maintain and our open spaces for years to come.
Thank you.
I hope for forever. Thank you.
Bernie, same question.
Thank you. So the work I've done in the general plan has helped me understand the focus areas where we can apply housing in a more dense area. But it's not going to be enough to really tackle the housing crisis. We're in a housing crisis. I gave the numbers, over fifty percent of our renters are rent burdened, and that's because we haven't built enough housing. So there's areas within the downtown, not downtown, but focus areas like Trancaz and Jefferson and South School that we can build denser areas, but this is, this is going to be incremental change. It's going to take a long time to get there because you have to find investors, you have to find, you have to redevelop. And then you also have the challenges of moving people, of displacement. And since we don't have enough housing, we have to be very aware of gentrification in certain areas of our community. I also recommended Timber Hill and Napa Oaks to be greenbelt. With the Disletta property, that's been in the RUL, the rural urban limit. The rural urban limit is what separates us from Napa County. Napa County has an ag reserve. They have the open space. The RUL, the city limits, that's where we apply and manage growth. So it's not about blanketing that location. There's environmental concerns, but because it's every twenty years we do the general plan update, we have to have that conversation. That conversation allows for public process to listen to our neighbors, to listen for people struggling with housing so we can make a decision that's the best for our community. No decision has been made yet. There's a process to this.
Thank you. And Bernie, you will start for the next question. In 2019, the Napa City Council approved 5G-ready antennas over the objections of Napa residents. Other cities have updated their telecommunications regulations to require five-hundred-foot setbacks from homes and regular testing to ensure compliance with radiation exposure limits. Would you support these additions to Napa's telecom ordinance?
I think that there's a lot of regulation outside the city that's outside purview, so we need to take a look at the locations where we can put 5G to blankly say no. I think that would open us up to have some liability with other government agencies. Also, we're living in a digital age where we have Zoom when schools are, you know, online and we have connectivity issues. So we can, I think we can find a balance between safety and new technology to make sure that we have internet access even for the most marginalized communities because a lot of people, students that are online don't have access to online services like many others in the community. So we have to, one, provide the infrastructure and at the same time, try and balance safety for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Renee?
I have to apologize. Please repeat the question.
It's, yeah. In 2019, Napa City Council approved 5G-ready antennas over the objections of Napa residents. Other cities have updated their telecommunications regulations to require five-hundred-foot setbacks from homes and regular testing to ensure compliance with radiation exposure limits. Would you support these additions to Napa's telecommunications ordinance?
Well, I'd like to look more into the actual additions. For now, as you say, people objected to this contract with Verizon for the 5G network. And I would still like to continue to go back and hear more of the concerns of my neighbors and especially District 4. One thing that my opponent brought up was that it would help, you know, disadvantaged and marginalized or people who don't have, you know, internet service. And we could, they don't necessarily go arm-in-arm. Bandwidth is something that we could provide going forward to homes that don't have it. It's about $250, I believe, to set up, and there's programs that can do that by partnering with private and public entities. So this isn't just a one-sided, you know, one way of looking at it that this will provide a safety net for our marginalized people by having 5G. That's a good argument, but it doesn't completely work, and it's not necessarily, it's true in some ways, but it's not the only way. Okay, but in my neighborhood, we are in District 4. They're very, very concerned about 5G in the residential neighborhood, and we would like to keep it out of our residential neighborhoods. I do understand that the FCC allows it into commercial areas, so we don't have a lot of say on that. Just to be frank, we don't have a lot of say on that, but we do, we do have a little bit of say about residential neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And Renee, I think this might be the last question before your closing statements in terms of time. Do you support a ban on all synthetic pesticides on city-owned land and a shift and a shift to using organic methods of weed abatement instead?
I do support a ban on all synthetic pesticides and herbicides. Lifeline, I believe, is the one we use now. It it's warnings do not, you know, it could cause death, it could cause serious illness if if an animal licks it or a child gets into it while before it has dried. It can be very, very harmful. This is not a good substitute. We need to go all organic, one hundred percent, and truly organic, not just lip service again. Okay? So I would say I would like to, I would like to ban all synthetic herbicides and pesticides on our, in our, in our, in our city. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bernie, the same question to you.
Absolutely, I would. I mean, going back to environmental justice, the method that we, how we take care of our neighborhoods and maintenance of public lands that expose our our public and our children and older community, we have to be mindful, and we have to be, we're responsible for the health of our community. So I absolutely do support that the ban. I believe some areas are, the city already has a policy in place. But we we can do more, and not just ban synthetic pesticides, but identify the the areas that have high tox toxicity, that that has socioeconomic issues and also environmental issues. If you look at the, some of the reports on the general plan, you'll see that there are neighborhoods that are severe need of help that with with environmental justice. These are areas that will cause breathing problems, long-term health effects. So we have to do more than just banning these synthetic, you know, sorry, I lost some words, but the synthetic liquids, but we have to do more than that, and the climate change, environmental justice element will help. Thank you.
Great, thank you both. And so before we end with the candidates' closing statements, on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Napa County, I want to thank the candidates for running and for their participation with us this evening. And we have thanked the audience for joining this session to meet the candidates and for proposing the thoughtful questions. For further information about our upcoming forums, about all about the candidates and ballot measures, links to our voters' edge guide and other election information, please visit the League's easy-to-use website, L W V Napa dot org. And if you would like to become involved with them, with us, men and women helping making democracy work for everyone, it's easy to join. Again, just visit our website, L W V Napa dot org. And a reminder that the deadline to register to vote is October nineteenth. If you have moved or changed your name or wish to change your party affiliation since you last registered, you need to re-register. If you vote by mail in Napa County, you can avoid any postal delivery delays by using one of the many drop boxes in Napa, and you do not need to use postage. And last but not least, please encourage your family, friends, and neighbors to vote in this election. Every vote counts. Now, back to the candidates' closing statements in reverse order. So we will start with Bernie.
One and a half. I'm very grateful to live in Napa. Napa is a place where I started my business, where I met my wife, that was born and raised here. Well, bought my first home and where my children were born and hope to raise for the the remainder of my life. You know, Napa was, they welcomed me back with open arms when I came back from war in Iraq, and I was able to transition back to civilian life because we live in such a great community, and my call to action led me to this disposition to to run for office and to be your next city councilperson. I will live in a diverse community. I think it's time that our our city council reflects that diverse community, somebody that that understands the the culture or the language and that can really connect their community. We need to to create safer, more inclusive community, and that starts with the people that we elect, and that is something that I will do, not only addressing housing, our public safety and and our budget, but also we we set the tone by our character and what we believe in to create a community that we're proud to raise our children in. So the District Four voters out there, I ask for your vote to vote for me, Bernie Darvise, for Napa City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And Renee, now your closing statement.
First of all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and all the viewers. I especially want to thank you for all your help today in getting me started with my background, which didn't end up working out. So that's why we have the the white behind me. But thank you so much for all of your time and energy. I grew up in Los Angeles County in the unincorporated, unincorporated part where was pretty open space. We had horses on our our property. We didn't have to get permits or anything for our horses. Everybody rode a horse. It was just a very beautiful place to grow up. I moved to Northern California after graduating from the University of Oregon. I lived in Japan for a year, and I lived there also for about six months as a teenager. Since I've been back and forth to Japan many times, over six or seven times, I consider myself well-traveled. I've been throughout Europe, very, very grateful that I had these opportunities. The the thing that I would like for for Napa is for our children to have these same opportunities. I encourage everyone to go to college. I encourage my staff to go to college to better themselves, to love what we have in Napa, but be people of the world so we can understand some of the deep issues going on in in our world today and and in our community. I would like to maintain our beautiful open spaces and keep the integrity of downtown Napa and District Four in general, which is large.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you both. And that's it for tonight's program. We wish everyone a good evening, and thank you for joining us. We appreciate you helping democracy work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.